Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Is that?
Rebecca Campbell.
Here.
Eric Sunquist.
Here.
Randy Udell.
Here.
Chris McHale.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
Waltzard and Andes Santana.
Here.
Margaret Bergamini.
Here.
Badri Lankala. All right.
Thank you, Ann. And if our tech facilitator would please go through our standard virtual meeting opening statement?
All right. Welcome to our Virtual Transportation Plan Policy and Planning Board meeting. We're going to go over a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking on the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click Raise Hand when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email list in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Our first item is approval of minutes from our March 1st, 2021 meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those minutes if they so chose. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Randy Udell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Furman. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving our minutes from March 1st, 2021, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Do we have any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, we don't.
Thank you, Ann. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none. Our first item of business this evening is Legis使6/4/332, repealing subsection 5.014 and creating subdivision 3.143A3 of the Madison General ordinances to formally move the crossing guard program from the Police Department to the Traffic Engineering Division. Alder Campbell.
Move approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Foster. Discussion. Alder Campbell, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. This is something that just, it just makes common sense. The Transportation Department and the Transportation Commission has overseen this crossing guards program for years, and it just, it makes sense that the coordination and administration of it be in the Transportation Department where all the work around it is happening anyway.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. Is there any further discussion? So I did get one email from TC Chair Ann Kovach, and she was talking with the drafter, and apparently there is a small typo, and they approved a version without that typo. I'm going to screen share so you can see it. I'm going to try to screen share so you can see it. Okay. Apparently, okay, this little part here that I have highlighted, and school crossing guards, where it says crossing guards and school crossing guards. The drafter meant to leave out and school crossing guards, but did not. So that would be in paragraph, I guess paragraph, looks like paragraph four, sentence four. So we'll stop sharing. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, as this was called out at TC, a substitute has been prepared that fixes that, that is agreed to by the sponsors. So perhaps a friendly amendment to the motion to recommend the substitute with that change incorporated.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Campbell, is that?
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then on the, excuse me here. On the main motion of repealing subsection 5.014 and creating subdivision 3.143A3 of the Madison General ordinances, to formally move the crossing guard program from the Police Department to the Traffic Engineering Division, all those in favor of approval with the change noted by Alder Foster, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Our next item of business is Legis使6/4/346, amending the City of Madison official map to modify the recommended street network for the portion of the planning area bounded by Vogues Road, Panito Creek, Greenway, Tradewinds Parkway, and Agriculture Drive Marsh Road. Tim, go ahead.
Yes, Chair and members of the Board, Tim Parks with Planning Staff, available to answer questions. On the question, 6/4/346, basically, we're modifying an amendment that was before this body last fall to make a correction in deference to a development proposal that was moving forward concurrently when the official map was pending last fall. I have a map here on the screen right now. Basically, we're swapping out the area that's highlighted in black for the area that is in blue. That'll allow the development of 5027 and 5101 Tradewinds Parkway to proceed. And again, that project was going through the approval process almost concurrent with the review of the official map amendment last fall. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there were any by the body. Thank you.
Excuse me. Questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Eric Sunquist, go ahead.
I move that the TPBB recommends approval of the map amendment as proposed.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Randy Udell. Any discussion? Eric, I have your hand still up. Did you want to speak to your motion, or? Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no hands raised. All those in favor of amending the City of Madison official map to modify the recommended street network for the portion of the planning area bounded by Vogues Road, Panito Creek, Greenway, Tradewinds Parkway, and Agriculture Drive Marsh Road, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Next item, Legis使6/4/606, West Town, Odana area plan.
Yeah, so my name is Dan McCullough. I'm one of the project co-leads, and I'm gonna share my screen really quick and give you guys a brief update as to what we're doing. Can everybody see okay?
Yes.
Just, okay, perfect. Thank you. So we want to just do a mid-project check-in with our boards, commissions, and commissions that we are likely to see during the formal, you know, review and approval process. So just give you a little bit of background of this plan. Some of the impetus was from the 2018 comprehensive plan that kind of directed staff to prepare plans for auto-oriented commercial areas and corridors. And this site really has quite a bit. It has a couple of those named corridors, mainly Mineral Point in Odana, as well as some of the activity centers, the West Town area, Research Park, as well as West Gate. There we go. Sorry, a couple animations I forgot about. So obviously, you know, there's been some challenges with retail over the last few years. Really starting back in the 90s, we've seen decline in retail, and the various retail centers in Madison have kind of weathered those a little differently. But we know certainly we're in the midst of shifting consumer habits as well as online spending. Particularly with COVID right now being a major issue, retail's been in kind of a bit of a decline, but we know not all sectors are in this decline. Malls tend to be a little bit more, as well as some of those operators. CBL, which is the owner of East Town and West Town, did apply for Chapter 11 bankruptcy protection. So just some of the background information that we're kind of keeping in our minds as we're moving forward. Our plan area is roughly bound by Mineral Point on the north, the Belt Line on the south, and the Research Park to the east. So it's a pretty big area, roughly about the size of downtown. And I want to show this slide because I think this tells a lot of the story about West Town. You know, the area, the west side was developed, I would say probably in the peak of, you know, auto dominance where everything was being planned around the car. And you can see a pretty dramatic shift between what we see on the west side as well as what we see in the central area. So in the lower left corner, that is the figure ground of the Capital and Isthmus area, shown at the same scale as the West Town. So when the areas are planned around cars, the blocks get bigger because no one plans on walking. Those streets become dominated by the car, so they become less attached to the development on its side. So there's a lot of those, those kind of just fundamental issues that go along with this, and I think just having this here kind of kind of keeps this on the tip of the mind as we move forward. We've done quite a bit of outreach for this plan, actually. Starting really right before the pandemic hit, we did a bracket-style kind of engagement to have the members of the public kind of weigh some priorities about things that any redevelopment should encourage, should include, include things like transportation, safe, comfortable streets, bike routes, frequent and convenient transit, to all the, some of those features that are included in redevelopment. We did a Zoom series as we're starting to learn how we do engagement during a pandemic. That gave us a lot of great input as we talked through some of the site-specific issues as well as some case studies that we've seen in other areas. We did some online mapping exercises, and we also did some focus groups with the chambers, the Latino, Black, and Hmong chambers, as well as business and landowners. Just kind of, again, getting some of those, deep dive into some of the, trying to understand everybody's perspective. I'm not going to go through all these, but all of these are linked on the memo that you got and are also available on our website. But I do want to talk a little bit about some of the design principles that we took towards developing the concept, and probably the first and most important is is really focusing around connectivity, walkability, and bikability. As we mentioned before, the blocks are are really, really big. You know, 172 acres for the West Town block compared to kind of the Isthmus, which is generally between, I would say, four and six. When those, you know, you think about those areas that were planned before the car was in Madison, really are the most walkable. And so we're trying to retrofit some, some level of walkability and bikability into this area with, with very, very large blocks. Thinking about how buildings should front public streets and making sure that those streets, those new streets that are included are designed for people as well as transportation. One thing that I think a lot of people forget is the city, city streets are the largest public open space network in the city. They're home to hundreds of thousands of city trees. There's space for sidewalk cafes, there's space for casual interactions between neighbors. So they do a lot of things in addition to moving people and being a place for, for infrastructure. Of course, this area is the west corridor for bus rapid transit, so it's one of our, one of our, our design principles is, of course, focused density along those areas. What we know from many of our other areas in the city, and the data that supports that, is where we have good transit, people use it. And it's the most effective way of pulling people out of their cars to grow a more sustainable city. So having those highest intensities in walking distance of those transit stations is a big priority for the plan. Having a range of building scales to encourage diversity of building types and housing options. We fully expect, you know, a lot of apartments to be a component of this, but we also want to make sure it's not the only type. Having some missing middles, some townhomes, some duplexes, some other small scale is important. So we're really maximizing the diversity in our, in our housing stock, so these new neighborhoods can better serve all of Madison's residents at all life phases. Understanding that a lot of buildings still have value, even though their use may be moving on. And that, you know, we don't, we don't want to necessarily propose demolishing everything. A lot of those buildings can be reused very effectively. And particularly when we, when we think about the sustainability aspects, about a third of buildings' energy use over the course of its life will be, will be basically used during its construction. So reusing an existing building is often the most sustainable path forward. Maintaining a mixed-use core or cores. A lot of these areas could be mixed-use, but I think we're trying to really drill down into what mixed-use really means. You know, if you think about these as a kind of a satellite downtown, downtowns often have single-use buildings, but a mixture of single-use buildings. But it's important to still have kind of that core area that is that active center where we expect a lot of ground-floor retail restaurants and kind of a heart of these areas moving forward. There's not a lot of open space in the area, particularly south of, in that kind of southwest quadrant, south of Mineral Point and west of Gammon. And so we think about how these, these neighborhood parks and these future open spaces can be a focal point for future residents, but also for the future employers, any businesses, parks bring people, and retail and entertainment uses want to be where the people are. So it's a great focal point and a great amenity moving forward. Thinking about how we can increase the canopy coverage in this area. So this is 2013 data, so it's actually before Emerald Lashboard. But there's very, very low levels canopy, partially because there's almost no pervious surface. So thinking about how we can increase the canopy cover as well as reduce the impervious surface as we move forward, that would go a long way in helping really with the stormwater management in the area. The 2018 flooding really shown a spotlight on the area and the need for improvements, particularly on the west side. And last principle is really focusing on flexibility. These, the mall areas, and a lot of these areas have a lot of varied ownership. And even though it looks like kind of a single place, it's really, you know, we have to kind of compartmentalize that. We could you know, craft a plan that works perfectly if we were starting from scratch. But a plan that really, for it to be implemented, has to work for all of these property owners individually and showing each a path forward and not be dependent upon others developing their property to the, to the extent practical. And I think another thing that we know is we know that change will happen. You know, we can see that happening in all the areas, whether there's closings or openings or new development proposals. Probably the most challenge is we don't know exactly where or when this is going to happen. There's so much uncertainty in these plans, and what we're trying to do is, again, is create a plan that works for now, for infill and redevelopment, but also, you know, helps move towards that long-term vision. So we want to start, first of all, with some of the primary connections that we see that are important. One of the, one of the big ones is, let me get the laser pointer, extending Odana eventually through the mall area connecting up at Denofrio and moving across to High Point, or High Point, yes. And the extension of Westfield through the mall area and crossing the Belt Line. That's one of the Belt Line crossings that has been studied and recommended by Wisconsin DOT. Another Belt Line crossing on Grand Canyon, and then, of course, linking that kind of Grand Canyon area with the Research Park. Right now, we have really about a half mile between those two corridors. And it'd be certainly beneficial to have some level local street or local bike connection moving through there. Once we kind of establish those primary connections, trying to achieve kind of that more walkable urban grid, certainly these aren't at the scale of the, the Isthmus, but sort of break down the scale of the site into more manageable pieces that can be redeveloped over time and create that, that walkable, bikable neighborhood that's not pushing all the traffic to the, to the arterials. And again, of course, I mentioned that phasing. So we looked at what streets could be phased in over time and which could go basically from the get-go with kind of a infill rather than a kind of a demo redevelopment. So thinking about those street networks that could occur over time and what has, what could happen right away. Land use-wise, starting at kind of the West Town, the purple, kind of maintaining a mixed-use area on the, I guess, I guess that's on the east side of the West Town within employment, use-focused along the Belt Line, trying to, the idea was to kind of minimize any impacts from the Belt Line on residential, shifting to a kind of an entirely residential portion as you move into kind of big box lands to the west. Shifting down Odana, maintaining that again as a kind of commercial area. Again, a mixed-use focused area, probably more active mixed-use area at West Gate, and introducing, again, some mixed-use along the Odana, I'm sorry, the Mineral Point frontage following the Belt Line. We saw the opportunity for quite a bit of growth in this area, and we, we wanted to think in terms of, again, how do we maximize that BRT? That, the accessibility. So when we start thinking about scales, we really try to keep it somewhat simple, having three general scales. Maximum height of five, maximum height of eight, and 12. 12, again, is really focused on those BRT stations at, at West Gate and along the Mineral Point frontage. That those eight floors are really focused along the kind of Gammon by the Belt Line, and kind of five throughout the remainder. We did want to pull the scale down a little bit through the the central area of West Town. Try just to create not quite as imposing of, imposing is not the right, the right word, but trying to bring it down the scale just a little bit in those areas to get a little more light, particularly into the open space of that area. Thinking about our path and bicycle networks. Right now, there, there is kind of a start, but it is somewhat disconnected. So our big focus was trying to encourage, or trying to locate off-street paths along, where we have opportunities and along those corridors that are, the volumes and speeds really are off-putting to any but the most aggressive cyclist. So showing a off-street path on the north side of Mineral Point, again, on Gammon. We still have the, the West Town path along the Belt, along the Belt Line. And then infilling with some of the, the more on-street types where we have lower volumes. And that would be a lot more comfortable to the average cyclist. So along Odana, which is going to be converted into a two-lane with a twiddle and bike lanes this year, extending that on-street route through the West Town area, and again, focusing on those those crossings of the Belt Line which don't have ramps. Those are far more comfortable for cyclists, so including a new facility on the, that West Westfield crossing. And again, another crossing is on the kind of connecting street between the Research Park and the Grand Canyon area. I want to show you a brief kind of illustration of what we think this could look like over time. So this is the existing condition. You can kind of see Mineral Point, Gammon, Belt Line, the mall, big box row, some of the outlaw buildings. And this is that, just that info, that, that phase one, where we could add some new streets, line those streets with new buildings. This does not require any demolition, strictly an infill process, but starts to get the ball rolling, and we can think about that. Then, as, as we could connect Odana through, that brings more eyes into the mall proper. We've tried to be really surgical with where these are, these streets are aligned, so we're really going through the, the inline stores in the mall, which are less costly and are in single ownership. Provide, this could also create new front doors to existing mall spaces as well. What could happen on the northern half, the eventual mall goes away, some pretty intense development there. As well as some other connections as well, and the final phase on the southern half. And of course, they, they could phase differently, you know, it could occur in a variety of different ways, but the point that we want to make with these is that not everything needs to go. And we can certainly work through quite a bit of, of difference, even, you know, even with just that first phase, that accomplishes quite a bit. But all phases are really set up, or this street network is kind of set up so we can support incremental growth while working towards that long-term shift in vision. So we, we are, as I mentioned, we are in kind of our, our second phase of public outreach. We had a couple of open houses back in January. We met with Plan Commission. So far, the concepts have been met with, with pretty, pretty well-supported. Liking the concepts, liking the, the opportunity for mixed-use, the street network. We've heard good things about the heights that are recommended. We've heard from some that they are too tall, but generally pretty well-supported so far. We want, of course, to check in with you to understand your perspective as well. But our estimated timeline for the balance of the project is we'll take the feedback from you. We're also meeting with Economic Development Committee this week and Board of Park Commissioners in April. Take that BCC feedback, make any amendments to the draft that are necessary. We're also going to be putting in a fairly robust implementation section. As has started to occur now, we're being asked to have proactive rezonings be part of planning efforts, and it's going to, it's going to be much simpler of a process if we do, if we kind of go through that process while the plans are in, in, while we're making those plans, so it's surprising nobody. But it's our hope to have a draft and an introduction this summer with a hopeful, hopeful adoption by early fall. So at this point, I'm happy to take any questions or listen to any comments that you have.
All right, we do have a couple of registrants for public comments, so we'll start with them. First is Janet Hirsch, 7311 Cedar Creek Trail, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition, wishing to speak. Janet, if you're there, you may begin when you're ready. You have three minutes.
Yes, yeah, I'm here. So first of all, to the board members, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have participated in several of the public presentations, and I've been reviewing the latest plans. I want, the reason I'm here today is I want to let you know some of my concerns regarding the transportation in the area. I've lived and worked, lived and/or worked in the area since the late 70s, on and off in various, various locations. The, but I question the need for the, the, the large quantity of additional street connectors. The, you know, as an example, there are four new streets that would be accessed Mineral Point Road at the West Town area. Four new streets accessing Mineral Point Road and the Research Park. Three accessing Odana Road at the east, the east end of Odana Road. And I guess I, we also, I also have concerns about the extension of Westfield through, through, through West Town and into the, into the, across the Belt Line. There, oh, and then there are also five new streets accessing Tokay from Science Drive. So these are all in addition to the labyrinth of streets that are, that are connecting those, those bigger streets within, within those areas. Also, several years ago, the Engineering Department had told our neighborhood that, that they were going to conduct a traffic study of the area west of Whitney Way. This would be the, exactly the same area that's This would be the exactly the same area that's, that's encompassed by the Odana area plan. And they had told us that it had been 20 years since there was, was a similar study. And we, we haven't seen anything. I don't know anything, that anything is, is being done, done at that, on that point. Lastly, in addition to the Legis藏64606, which was used for this presentation for, for this board. There's also, you should also look at the documents under Legis藏64442 for some additional comments from neighbors in the area and businesses. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, the other person we have registered is Joe DuPere, I think, 66 West Town Mall, neither in support nor opposition. Not wishing to speak, but able to answer questions representing CBL Properties, West Town and West Town Mall. Any questions for for Joe? All right, seeing none, questions for staff? Or comments? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess one question, yeah, actually with that, that's a good slide to have up. So, you know, related to the BRT routing and this question of the West Transfer Point, you know, we've had several conversations here. I think we are expecting to to resolve that question as part of the network redesign study that is expected to finish up more at the end of the year. And I don't know, this might be partly a question for Tom or somebody in Metro if they're here, but will we have an opportunity? Will we have a good sense of that question ahead of needing to finalize this plan? And I guess in particular, just in looking at some of the proposed land uses that seem like they might be contingent on that additional BRT stop there where the West Transfer Point is and, and then a question to Dan, would that change any of the recommendations if that was not a BRT stop?
Well, I can add that I don't necessarily think we would change the land use recommendations. It's possible that we would think about scale a little differently. The, you know, the Westgate area would probably be the, you know, certainly the most appropriate one to consider changing, but it does have, you know, a fully functioning grocery store. You know, having lived right across the street from a grocery store in, in my past life, I it's, it's the best thing if you live across the street from the grocery store. They're going to support it, you know, other businesses as well. So we could certainly see that area having a mixed use, you know, being a major mixed use node moving forward. So I don't think we would change the land use. You know, does, will we, you know, consider changing from eight to 12 if it's not on BRT? That's, that's possible. But again, I don't necessarily think having, you know, a 12-story max height there is, is a bad thing even without BRT.
I mean, as far as the BRT, the reason for touching the West Transfer Point is it allows the BRT to be perhaps a little bit more easily accessible to some of the neighborhoods in the Southwest. And sometimes those are underserved neighborhoods or some of those neighborhoods are communities of color or low income. But it's not necessarily, given that we will keep that transfer point, we are trying to make investments. How do we want to put it? Our investments in the BRT from Mineral Point Road to the West Transfer Point will be just the amount that's necessary to serve the West Transfer Point and not necessarily of such such magnitude that we would regret having to abandon them if we needed to in the future.
Thank you, Tom. Alder Foster, do you have any further questions?
Yeah, I did have a couple and maybe just to that point, maybe just, you know, thinking of having a note or an asterisk on that location if you did, you know, just to say maybe recommends 12 stories if there is BRT and eight if not, or something like that is probably simple enough just to, if, if that's the recommendation. My other question, sort of a clarifying question was you mentioned, Dan, the intent to include proposed zoning changes sort of along with this, which is great to hear. I think that'll be, that's, that's definitely the way to do it. Is proposed map reservations part of that same process?
Yes, yeah, we're, you know, we've started the process with Oscar Mayer and we're kind of recognizing that oh boy, this would have been a little easier to talk about during the planning process. So it's not catching people by surprise after the fact. And just with some of the complications with, or some of the complexities that come with mixed use districts. You know, allowing a variety of uses that might not be perfectly aligned with plan recommendations, but probably okay. Just having those out in the open from day one, we think will work much better. But yes, certainly official map reservations, certainly with this one, we're going to be we want to have some conversations with state DOT, particularly on those Beltline crossings that they have studied in the past to make sure if we are going to official map. We're getting it in the right place from, you know, generally in the right place from day one. So as, you know, these areas redevelop, we're not having a kind of a late shift in the game where we have to have a weird alignment to make those crossings work.
Yeah, that, that sounds, sounds good. And I mean, I think even perhaps to a lesser degree, but a number of these other streets that you're recommending to get a bit finer grain. Or, you know, even, you know, it's, I guess it's a, it's a little bit of a toss-up if you don't know the precise location or if there's you know, options to shift a little bit, it feels like it might still be a good idea to try and put some markers down for those so that we can assure to get some level of connectivity, even if we need to shift them from the reservation at some point.
Yep. And so there are a lot of the streets in the, particularly in the mall area. They are pretty intentionally set. Sometimes they're on the ring road, but have connections, you know, kind of straighten out those edge to make connections. Though there's a lot of covenants kind of tied into that. So it's not super easy to change. Some of those others are just kind of right along property lines, trying to, trying to figure out what the best way is for those. And I think that's a, a great policy question, you know, to the extent that which how many streets get redeveloped or how many streets get officially mapped. So certainly, you know, an officially mapped street can count as a front yard for basically zoning purposes. So that, that could be something that we think about moving forward.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, may not know all the implications of it, but it feels like maybe my impression is maybe doing, doing more rather than fewer is the right place because I believe we can always, you know, abandon or change them if somebody has a proposal that makes sense, you know, to to shift the alignment or to not have a street for some reason, but it's kind of hard to go back the other way. Something gets built. My last sort of question and comment is around the bike network stuff and it's
Let me get that slide up.
Yeah. It's great to be able to give some input early here. You know, one thing I've been thinking quite a bit related to these plans and what actual impact they have on the transportation system. A lot of it is around the, the plating component. So obviously for the, like the where those of the, the streets are aligned or the off-street paths is important, but then also this question of right-of-way width. And I know that's come up in some other development plans as well. You know, I was actually just talking with Chris Pedakowski about this today on a, a plating that will be in front of the council tomorrow. I think one of the challenges of, of translating an adopted plan into sort of the reality is that step of the plan shows some streets and might show sort of at a very high level kind of arterial versus, you know, local. But I think to the degree that, that the plan could try and predict sort of estimated motor vehicle volumes as well as the question of whether on-street parking is, you know, sort of planned and expected or desired either on both sides or one side. That might then be able to be translated into what the, what the needs are from a bike facility perspective to get that low-stress facility. And could probably be calculated a little bit better in terms of the right-of-way width that will be requested or required as part of the padding. So maybe something to think about for the on-street bike network is, is and, and motor vehicle network is assigning some, some motor vehicle volumes, especially related to the low-stress bike chart. So we can basically see where would, where would we want shared streets versus standard bike lanes versus buffered bike lanes versus protected bike lanes? Because all of those kind of impact the, the overall right-of-way that we would be desired.
Yeah. And so we, we do expect to have street sections to be part of the implementations process, you know, those tasks that we're going to be developing. One of the things that we're also considering is just, you know, understanding that, that there's, this certainly could be a retail area moving forward in the future. We expect that to be the case for the, for the foreseeable future anyways. It's also focusing on, you know, how retail streets work, you know, you want to keep them relatively tight. So you could see a business on one side and then the business on the other side and pedestrians can walk back and forth easily across those areas. So we do, there's a, like any right-of-way projects. There's a lot of competing needs and we're hoping to strike that perfect balance again. So we'll see. Stay tuned.
Yeah, well, I guess that actually just puts a strong point on what I'm recommending because, I mean, I, per our adopted policies, I think our expectations should be that we have a low-stress pedestrian facility and a low-stress bike facility. So if that's the starting point and you know how many cars you expect to be traveling, then that might influence your, your decisions around whether there'll be space for on-street parking or not. But I think this is probably the better stage to do that. Than just saying there's a lot of competing interests, kicking the can down the road. We set up middle, you know, middle of the road right-of-way and then we're at the construction phase and really kicking ourselves because we don't, we're having to make those choices then. So I think I think it'd be good to do as part of the planning process. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Chris McHale, go ahead.
Thanks. This is looking great. So thanks for sharing. Could you pull up, I think there was one that had existing and proposed street connections?
This one?
Having, just like, yeah, that'd be good. Okay, so I guess all I was wondering was it obviously makes sense to include some of these Beltline crossings that I know West dot has already sort of knotted to. But I was, I just want to take another look at this and wonder if there aren't opportunities that should be mapped out in the plan that are a sort of ambitious, you know, given that these take so long to play out, do we, do we want to acknowledge now that there might be additional opportunities?
So we did take a little bit of, of creative license with these crossings. So the West Town one is in the DOT report. The DOT said this is a good crossing. Generally feasible, might be tough with grades, but you know, it's kind of an engineering thing that seemed to be able to overcome. Grand Canyon crossing as well. One of the things that we added was this Watts to Tokay connection. They had studied a Watts to Research Park. But basically that's been precluded by the Exact Sciences Construction and their facilities. And that would have been a challenging process anyways. But they said this is, you know, if they're, they're talking about pulling traffic, their interests are pulling traffic off the Beltline. You know, traffic that has to use the Beltline for basically one exit and get off. And they found that connection had a ton of utility and would pull a lot of vehicles off the Beltline. So we thought this one could actually work, it could work. It goes through the Exact Science property as well as the USGS before connect, crossing the Beltline. In this form, it would likely go over the car dealership, kind of in the entrance, over Odana and land on the, the, kind of on the downslope of Tokay. But that would give us a very good, very functional east-west core, continuous east-west corridor. And if the Research, or if, if the West Transfer Point remains in its current location would I think very well, you know, do a great job of linking those, those routes to the west in a way that was more direct, serve more residents and can move buses faster. But that's again, one of the reasons we do want to meet with, with DOT is kind of start to confirm some of what they said in the past is okay, and then start to vet some of these new kind of more ambitious crossings.
I'm wondering if Tom Lynch wanted to say something too.
Go ahead, Tom. You're muted, Tom.
It's the first time I've, I've been told I was muted today. That's So in my former life, I was actually the one that did this study for the DOT that evaluated these crossings. All of these crossings really are inconsequential as far as taking traffic off of the Beltline. However, they are consequential as far as taking traffic away from the interchanges. And the, the one west of Whitney Way has the most utility. They all cost, you know, between 11 and 13 million dollars. So it's a relatively high price tag. If, if the city had a desire to really pursue one when the Beltline study re-initiates itself, the city could pursue one. And I you know, with TID 46 and everything, probably the one west of Whitney Way would have the most utility and the most opportunity for joint funding. So that's just that's what I know about it.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. I guess, I mean, you're already doing this, it seems like, but just I would be encouraging us to think about what, you know, what could make sense, even if it, um, we don't have the, the guarantee that it, you know, would, would happen necessarily. So thanks.
I think it would be likely that we would get all of them. But I think it could be likely that we could get one of them.
And, and one other added note that the, the kind of the Watts to Tokay that has the added issue of acquiring land from the feds basically. So it's not, I don't believe that's something that if we really wanted to, we'd be able to use eminent domain on. So one of our tools does not work with that alternative.
All right. Thanks, Eric, Tom and Dan, Eric, I'm sorry, Chris, Tom and Dan, Eric Sunquist, Joe Nick.
Yeah, just a couple of things just to follow up on that discussion. And thinking back to the to the person who spoke to us from the neighborhood, it it probably shouldn't be a goal of the plan to be, which I think it very highly of overall, but it shouldn't be a, a goal to pull traffic off the Beltline. I mean, I get the shorthand there. But, you know, we want less traffic overall. And so if, if the new traffic analyses show that it were simply diverting traffic from Beltline to Watts Road or to other local streets, then you know, yeah, sure, West dot might like that for some reasons, but that's if I were, if I lived on near Watts Road, I wouldn't like that so much. So I think it's maybe it's just a nomenclature thing, but kind of just bigger point being these it can seem like a, and maybe is in some cases. Well, let me rephrase that. It may seem like it's adding these streets is going to add traffic when we know the goal is to to reduce it, to shorten trips, to make more walking possible, to reduce the block sizes and increase the mix. But, you know, if I pick this up and hear, hey, more streets and more traffic off the Beltline, then that then I'm, you know, that doesn't sound great. So just a point there. And the other point is know, that doesn't sound great. So just a point there. And the other point is that, really, I guess I'm just giving speeches here and not asking questions, but the other one is another point. We're already getting a bunch of proposals in this area in Plan Commission. We have a, we just had a big one at Oakwood. We have a big one underway in the Research Park at the corner of Whitney Way in Mineral Point. And we had a smaller one on the, one of the outlots at the mall. And so, you know, it's a fierce urgency of now thing. This plan will be super timely and helpful in dealing with those things. Oh, and also, I mean, BRT, of course, is a transportation project too. So we've, this has already come up in BRT context. We had to keep the turning movements on Mineral Point because the street network was so bad there. So we, you know, this is already coming up there too. So the sooner the better. I know it was an optimistic timeline, but the more, at least the principles can be shared. I will say, we came perilously close in Plan Commission to acceding to a proposal, a proposer who wanted to take the sidewalks out and said, you know, I'm building in the middle of a parking lot. Who cares? It's just a parking lot and people can walk through the parking lot if they want to. And I, you know, the original motion was to go along with that. So people making decisions in the interim need to have some of this guidance to the extent that they can. And just, you know, those of us on TPBB should remember it and how Plan Commission can too. So my two little speeches.
And just to respond to the Beltline crossings, you know, our goal with those is to kind of link neighborhoods back together that are separated by that. Our goal is not to pull traffic off the beltline. That may be DOT's goals. And I think Tom probably has the better institutional knowledge that they're trying to make the ramps work better. And so, yes.
Yeah, no, I get, I got it. But it is, you're going to hear people thinking that new roads mean more traffic and hopefully those new links mean less traffic because people can get there from here instead of having to get on the beltline or drive down, you know, to somewhere arterial and win their way around.
Thanks, Eric. Tom, did you have a follow-up comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, probably from our perspective, the greatest benefit of crossing west of Whitney would be provide another avenue for buses to get to the southwest portion of the city. You know, right now they have to go through the Whitney Way interchange. And because of the way the Whitney Way interchange is constructed, it's very difficult to put in a dedicated transit lane. So if we had another way to get to the southwest side for our buses, it would just be helpful. So that's, that's that.
Thank you, Tom. Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna disagree here a bit with Eric in terms of the advantages of actually moving some traffic off the beltline or at least stalling out the increase in growth in traffic in the beltline. You know, we know from the first rounds of studies on that stretch of road that, you know, a very large proportion of the traffic is basically local traffic. They're getting out on one exit and getting off on the next, often because I'll do it because the street network is inadequate to, you know, get where I need to go. So I think that if we can rebuild, build in some more walkability and, which to me goes hand in hand with building in a better ability to serve this area with transit and link it to other areas with transit, then perhaps, you know, we have some opportunities to reduce vehicles, single occupancy vehicles on the beltline and on the neighborhood streets. I know that's a tall order, but I would hope that that would be our goal on this. So the idea of, you know, punching through another connector, for example, to the southwest side, as Tom said, the Whitney Way intersection doesn't accommodate buses terribly well. And the sort of Watts Road, Beltline, Gammon Road area has long been a problem spot for collisions and congestion. That whole stretch of Gammon is a problem. I, somewhat unrelated, well, it's related because as you were noting, street canopy or tree canopy in this area is really a problem. So just something that jumped to mind as you were showing the taller buildings along Mineral Point Road. Now, in the area of Oakwood, that's one of the few areas where we do have mature trees. And I would hope that those would be accommodated and that we would be looking at, especially on some of these larger boulevards, trying to make sure that we maintain the space to plant, you know, not just the short trees, but the very large canopy trees. Because yes, this is an area that's horrifically deficient. And I'm a little concerned too about the, what's currently the West Town Mall area. I'd be really interested to see the floodplain map or the actual flood map laid over this. You know, I see that you included some green space potentially in the West Town parking lot. But I, you know, is it sufficient? You know, could we be doing, could we do more? You know, we know we have flooding, we've had flooding problems along Mineral Point in that area. We've already got retention ponds. How much, you know, is that small area really going to be enough to help make a dent in that? And then finally, that brings to mind, you know, historically, we've had problems, not all the time, but on and off with bus service to the mall as it exists now. So I would hope that any redevelopment of that area, those hundreds of acres, would also integrate into the plan, you know, before things are constructed, taken down or constructed, really integrate, not just the bus rapid transit, but the feeder routes to accommodate those and not have the situation that we have, for example, at East Town Mall where our, essentially our transfer point is a shelter in the middle of a parking lot. That's very uncomfortable for a lot of people to get to and certainly very uncomfortable during three seasons of our year. So again, like Eric, no real questions, just comments.
Sure. And I can speak a little bit to the stormwater. So right now, engineering is working on their stormwater study for the west side. That will show a bit more, oh, my video stopped. Sorry about that. So that'll give a little bit more information about kind of what is needed in the watershed. So the open space, that is, that is considered, you know, for the purposes of this plan, that is going to be, you know, we're looking at that as a park, not as a stormwater facility. A couple of things though, West Town is actually kind of first, it's kind of almost an island, right? It's on, there's a, basically a moat surrounding it. It's a little elevated. It does have a, actually a stormwater pipe that goes underneath the building. That's certainly not engineering's preference, which is why you see this little green strip moving out into the detention basement. And there, that could be more than just a, you know, not just a conveyance, but you know, maybe it's kind of a Venetian pedestrian street on a canal or something like, something more that is still kind of a, an attractive space that also has a stormwater function rather than just being a stormwater area. So any new redevelopment and development, of course, would be required to follow the city's new and more rigorous stormwater standards. So that would, of course, happen as well. Basically, my understanding is, in the most redevelopment context, that would require green roofs. Though this is a much larger site, so they might be able to use more, you know, might be ponds as well. But there's quite a bit more rigorous standards in place. Be forward.
All right. Thank you. Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, just one quick clarification or question. Tom, you mentioned, what was the estimated cost of one of the Beltline crossings?
Tom Lynch, are you still with us?
I thought he said about 13 million.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I stepped away for just a second. Between 10 and 13 million. These are difficult crossings. The one that's proposed is actually not the one that was analyzed. The one that was analyzed was one that had challenges with Guy wires with the tower.
Yep. And that was right in here.
Yeah. So it's, it's, yeah, that's where it was. This one would have challenges with Odana Road. So this one would involve two bridges. They haven't analyzed it. That being said, you know, WISDOT will want to form city partnerships when they study the beltline. And this is, this directly serves TID 46, which is a healthy TID. And so if the city wanted to pursue this crossing, I would, I would put it at a, you know, it's actually feasible. It's not necessarily just in the dream category, but it could actually occur. So.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make a comment on that. I mean, I think it's really important, certainly in this plan. I mean, I think we absolutely need to be showing the crossings that we would like to have and that we think are important for future and existing neighborhoods. And I, you know, I got their sort of big numbers and we need to kind of be practical or something, but you know, the Flex Lane project, I believe the newspaper is reporting it's a $45 million project. So, you know, there's money to add an extra lane on the beltline. That's more than the cost of all three of these crossings. And I think to be more insistent on the fact that if there's a highway, a freeway that's going to run through our city, the cost of that freeway is to have connections across it.
Yeah.
Really take us a strong position of advocacy to say, look, this is the cost of having a US highway running through the middle of these neighborhoods is we need to, we need to heal them and we need to get those crossings.
Yeah. I think we've, we've kind of, so originally, the DOT was looking at, you know, there are a half billion dollars worth of improvements, you know, if you were to add a lane, that's how much it would cost. I agree that the Flex Lane really addresses the online capacity issues for probably a couple decades, depending on how COVID effects are VMT. And so we have encouraged the DOT that when they start up a study that they focus in on the crossings and not so much the mainline.
Yeah, no, that's good. I guess I'm just, I'm advocating for a strong call in the plan for these crossings. I think they are really critical to the future health of these neighborhoods. And I think we should, we should plan on making a very strong case related to any future Beltline work about the need to make these crossings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Further questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Dan, did you get the feedback that you were looking for? Are there any questions that you have, things that you want, anything for the one from us at this point for this plan?
No, I think I got a lot of good information today. And again, we're just trying to check in to make sure that when we show up at, during the BCC process, you know, we're trying to avoid the red flags, you know, at the 11th hour. So thank you for your input tonight and look forward to talking to you next time.
And then I think you may have mentioned earlier, but if you wouldn't mind saying again, when do you think we might see this again?
It's our hope. I think we could probably get introduced in July or August. So depending upon council's schedule, certainly, we want to get it approved before budget season. That's a hard deadline. So, so yeah, our target is definitely, you know, late summer, early fall approval.
Great. Thank you. All right. I guess one last call for questions, comments then, before we close out this item. All right, seeing none. Thanks again to all staff. Then we don't have anything left for the evening except for some general announcements. Our next meeting is actually a joint meeting on the 24th. And then our following meeting will be on April 5th. Yeah, that's all I, oh, Margaret, we're commencing. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to comment on the agenda for that meeting, especially since it's a joint meeting, personally, I would find it very helpful if there were an item on the agenda talking about the impact of the historic federal bill that was passed this weekend and which included a great deal of, you know, probably one of the, probably one of the best transit packages we've seen in this country's history. So I'm sure staff is strategizing right now about how to best utilize those dollars. And I know that there's, you know, time is of the essence with some of those dollars too. So it'd be a great opportunity to hear from staff, at least the preliminary plans for those dollars and where we stand.
Thank you, Margaret. I will see if we can get something from staff about that, even if it is brief at the joint meeting. Alder Campbell, please go ahead.
Speaking of agendas, I look forward to having an agenda planning meeting, which maybe we were going to have before this one, but didn't happen. So I look forward to getting back into that cycle of us having agenda planning meetings that are properly posted and can include anyone who wishes to be there.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. Yes, I think my intent will be for our next regular meeting before April 5th, hopefully at 3:00 PM. That may sound like quite a bit of time, two hours. We don't need to take up the entire time. But I think at least for our initial meeting, a two-hour window would be appropriate. The intent for that meeting and those meetings as they go forward would be to, you know, sort of lay out our large, our large policy items and what role we want to have in engaging with those. If you remember, folks, we talked about this, I think, two meetings ago. And it is something that I and I think many of you want to begin again. So, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, just a note, there's been smaller meetings regarding the agenda, but the larger meetings, there's been a couple of issues brought up regarding what constitutes a quorum, the posting. Is it a type one or a type two? And if it's a type two, can we switch between a type one and a type two and who's trained on a type two? So there's complications. Sent some emails. Ordinarily, if this was not a governing body, we could just set up a Zoom meeting and it can all occur. But then to comply with open meetings and everything, there needs to be a couple of clarifications. And I just sent an email to our public records and public meetings attorney to ask some follow-up questions on them.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I did speak with Attorney Strange about this about a week ago or a week and a half ago. And from his perspective, there were, there was no violation of open meetings laws for us having another meeting as long as it's noticed. And that if we do happen to have a quorum, that when we do reach a quorum, if that occurs, that we begin taking minutes and just write down what was said. And that he also recommended that we not And that he also recommended that we not discuss the normal business of the board, but it was certainly okay to discuss our work plan.
Yeah.
Tier one versus tier two, that's simply an IT resources and there's, there's nothing to be involved.
But there's, there's just more moving parts. You know, initially it seems harder. I think some people are saying that a quorum rule, does a quorum rule apply? And if so, then that becomes just a challenge. And so, so we've asked for some clarification regarding that.
Alder Kimball, go ahead.
Um, I raised my hand again to say, maybe, could we think about if we're going to have a two-hour meeting, not having it directly before TPPB, which sometimes goes three hours? Can we just explore that? Because that could be, can be rough. And yeah, I mean, I think that's what the, the advice that Attorney Strange gave you, Chair, is, you know, what, what I've always heard and how we've always operated before, there is the added, you know, issue of, of tech. But I, the tier one, tier two, as you said, that's not a legal anything, that's just coordinating with the right tech people. And I don't think our agenda setting meeting is really a tier one meeting. It's, I mean, I, I understand that there are added complications, but I really don't think it's that complicated.
Thank you, Alder Kimball. Alder Foster, go ahead, or I'm sorry, Chris, you're up next.
I was going to veer off topic a little bit, but related to that, the Parking Subcommittee is meeting Fridays at 11 through at least April. And those are, are noticed to the public. So, and that's currently myself and Alder Foster and Alder Kimball. So if folks should be aware that those are moving forward.
Thank you, Chris. And I envision the meetings that we're talking about here for agenda setting or for priority setting being something akin to those, not using tier one level of resources. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that was exactly the point I was going to make. I don't understand why this is getting so confusing, particularly when our city attorney is giving really clear advice. This is literally the same as the Parking subgroup that just met last week, published a possible form, met with a Zoom link and we're done. The agenda setting meetings are no different than that. So I don't, I don't think we need to overcomplicate it and we should.
I guess, I'm, all right. The request was made last Wednesday. I was gone on Thursday and Friday. A question has been asked that I clarify this and I am pursuing the clarification. I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, I'm just trying to comply with the law. So hopefully I'll get an answer in the next two or three days. So I'm, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, I'm just trying to comply with the law.
Thank you, Tom. All right, I'll, I'll follow up with you then at our next TPPB Agenda Setting Meeting or before then, if you get that information. All right, thank you, everyone. Any more comments before we adjourn for the evening? All right, thank you all for your time. Let's take motions to adjourn. Well, it looks like a motion by Eric Sunquist. Is there a second?
I got it.
And Alder Foster, all those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Pose no. It's unanimous, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.